Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting from Tuesday, August 5, 2025. The time is 7:36. If you will, if you're able, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance by rising. Yeah, there's a conversation happening in the Great Hall. If you would mind taking it out of the room. Okay. The first order of business right now is citizens' comments. Yes, Ms. Walsh.
I know it's Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I know it's my personal disability, wearing hearing aids. But if more than one person is talking, all I get is nothing. So I appreciate it when the audience can be quiet. As I had been moving through town, I noticed these bright red hydrants. So initially, I thought we were on some sort of replacement program. And then the council and aging bus driver said he's been noticing pairs of people painting the hydrants red. So what I'd like to know is, are they town employees? Are they volunteers? Is this an Eagle Scout project?
Yeah, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, they're summer employees, mostly high school students doing the painting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to praise them. It's been an unusually hot and humid summer to be out in the bright sun. Painting hydrants, which is hot metal, is probably not the best choice in your summer vacation. They do an admirable job. I haven't noticed splashes of red paint on the sidewalk or on any grass or anything. It's strictly on the hydrants. Now that they've done whole streets, I find it very impressive. And I know some people wanted them in Stoughton colors, and they traditionally are black and white. But when the grass grows up, if they're black, it's not as easy to see them. But if they're bright red, even with green grass around, they're easy to spot. And as someone who lives in a tinderbox that's 300 years old, I appreciate the high visibility. So I'd want to thank those folks. Even though it's paid employment, it's not a job I would do.
Cynthia, we'll pass on those comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Just before we go on, I do, this is just for the record, I wanted to reflect that. We called to order the meeting because there is a quorum present. We have Mr. Gito, we have Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. McCrisky, and myself. Mr. Carrera is absent for tonight. I just wanted to make sure that was reflected in the record. Are there any other citizen's comments? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Can you hear me?
Again, yes.
Okay. I wanted to know why is the Climate Committee still sending out information with their insignia when they're a defunct group?
So the Charter itself, I don't have a whole lot of information about this, but I have enough, I think, to provide an answer to you. The Charter, sorry, not the Charter. The town meeting voted for that group to end as of June 30 of 2025. Obviously, we're beyond that date. It's August 5. And now they are private citizens meeting on their own behalf. And they do not represent the town currently. But they are perfectly able to meet and associate, according to Article 1 of the Constitution. So if they offer recommendations, they're doing this private citizens currently.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said about making recommendations or putting out information with their insignia on it. Is that still viable?
Their insignia has nothing to do with the town. They are currently just private citizens associating in conformity with the First Amendment of the Constitution.
So you're saying that they're not getting any more monies? They're not utilizing any grant monies or anything like that?
They never were authorized to get any money. So...
I thought they got $50,000 from us.
The town got that money. That might have been through a recommendation of theirs, but it's through the work of the town, the organization itself, this group of people. They have no access to spend money. They have no access and no authority to request money or grants. So, no, that was all through the town, through the recommendations.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, I mean, of course, they can meet on their own. I don't have a problem with that. But I'm glad to hear that they're not getting any monies from us, especially due to the fact that they've already gotten $50,000 of taxpayer money already for climate change, when climate change has been designated as a fake claim, and it's based on junk science. That's what the EPA just came up with. That was reported by the New York Times. And they're drafting a plan to end their own ability to fight climate change because they want to rescind their 2009 declaration that scientifically established that greenhouse gases endanger human lives. And the reason why they don't want to do that anymore is because it's not true. The EPA also claimed that the rescinding, that they called to rescind limits on tailpipe emissions because they were only designed to encourage automakers to sell more electric cars. And I feel that, along with many other people, that given these new revelations, that funding this group any further would be akin to taking our tax money to buy dental insurance for the tooth fairy. And she doesn't exist either. But at least she doesn't take money. She gives it, so that's a little better. But I'm really glad to hear that they're not getting any more money. They're not utilizing any grant money. They're not a group protected by the, I mean, established by the town anymore. So that's, they're defunct, and that makes me happy. Thank you.
Yeah, just one minor correction. They never received any money, and they were never authorized to receive money.
I'm sorry?
You said they're no longer getting any money. They never received money.
They never got $50,000?
The town got $50,000. They do not represent the town.
They never got a penny of that?
The town got that money.
Okay. But then the town didn't give it to them to utilize for what, for that fake climate change?
For our committees.
I'm sorry?
They have no budget. You would have seen it in the town budget, right? You're on the Finance Committee, if I'm not mistaken. You would have seen that as a line item in our budget, and it doesn't exist. So, no, they do not have money to spend, and they never did.
Okay. So where did that money go, then?
To the town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm glad it didn't go to them. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business. Town manager comments. Mr. Town Manager.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, not a presentation, but a handout I've put in front of each of you with my annual report. It's a second annual report on the double poll update, as submitted by the Assistant Chief, who we put in charge of this two years ago. And one point on it, this reflects a reduction over the last year of 56 polls that have been removed. So the presentation speaks for itself. The board has asked for annual update, so this is that annual update before you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I did make some claims there I felt were true about the town having access to grant money. I just wanted to have, can you corroborate that, just as a second set of eyes on this fact?
I believe you're correct, Mr. Chairman. There was a request for $50,000 should they need a consultant. There was no money, to my knowledge, spent on any consultants.
Thank you. Next item is Select Board comments. Mr. Gito, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do. I'm disappointed and concerned that both the executive and legislative branches of our federal government allow the law enforcement agencies to wear masks during routine enforcement activities. And I do not believe that our country can long exist if its law enforcement agencies, agents are allowed to wear masks during routine enforcement activities. I'd resist being apprehended by people wearing masks, and I suggest that many other people would as well. Many people speak glibly of our government taking their rights away, but are silent when others, whose only offense is being an illegal immigrant, are imprisoned, put on a plane, and sent to another country. It is estimated that there are 11 million of these people, the immigrants, or 3.3% of our population. In Stoughton, with 30,000 people, that would mean almost 1,000 people are illegal immigrants. And they're our neighbors, perhaps our caregivers, workers, and schoolmates. So I would ask the town manager if he would draft a policy that the board consider that requires that the Stoughton Police Department personnel not wear masks in the performance of their duties as town employees, and that they not wear masks if they are on duty for other departments or agencies. Now, that's something that we can look at, and we can figure out what we want to do with. I think, I'm an old guy. I've never remember this happening, aside from a public health emergency like we had with COVID. I looked at the Code of Federal Regulations. This is a major issue. It's not in the Code of Federal Regulations. That code requires rulemaking, a lot of review. It's just being done administratively within departments. I don't know what more to say about that. I mean, I could go on. I was a Fed for a long time, and I know about federal rulemaking and what's required under those conditions. And in major situations, there is federal rulemaking for things like this. The second point. I had asked the town manager last year if he would put money in the budget to address removing dead trees, dead street trees, because the ash trees are being killed by boers. And I think you see that now in many areas of town. They're dying. The trees are dying, and they'll be a danger to people and vehicles. And I would suggest that you survey these trees and get them removed soon. And I speak from experience of having at least 10 large ash trees that have died on my property. And big branches are falling down. I mean, this isn't a trivial thing. So I just want to mention that. And I sent something to the town manager indicating the comments that I was going to make tonight. And I'll check with him from time to time to find out how things are going. The next topic is a little bit more complex, and it relates to our downtown zoning and our downtown housing numbers, as they relate to zoning requirements that the state MBTA Communities Program has required. And I raise the issue because the Planning Board is having a meeting on August 14 to consider topics to address this next year. In simple terms, our downtown zoning allows for, our downtown zoning allows for 2,760 households, a little bit more than that, but that's close enough. So we have zoned for five households for every three required by the state because the state is only, the state MBTA Communities Program only required 1,760. So we've zoned for five households in the downtown versus three the state would require. That may be a good thing, it may not be a good thing. Don't know. We know that these are theoretical numbers. They may never, we never may reach those goals. But we know that some towns have resisted the MBTA Communities Program. And we know, we, the town, knows probably where we rank in terms of other communities. I don't know that right now. I should have asked that, but I didn't. And, but I've been led to believe that we are sort of at the high end of towns that have zoned the downtown area in response to the state. So our zoning allows for about 1,000 more households than the state in the downtown area. And at 2 and 1/2 people per household, which is the state average, that's about 2,500 people. And it may be a good thing, it may not be a good thing. But what we know is that our town hasn't done as much in terms of being able to implement in the downtown as other communities. I don't know the reason for that. But I think we should ask ourselves what's going on. Are our parameters too lax so that people don't want to come into downtown and build because they're not going to get a good return on investment? The lots may be too small, they may be too large, they may be whatever they are. Or perhaps our vision was wrong. But I don't think that we should just assume that we should just go on the way we are without giving that a look. We've thought that what we were doing was a good idea. We've seen a building being put up in the downtown area. It was put up a year and a half ago, or a year ago at least, and still isn't occupied. And we've seen some other properties that have been occupied downtown. And we see some buildings that are being built outside the downtown. I think it's an important topic to address. So that's my, those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be a benefit, I agree with Lou in every one of these points, but I think it would be a benefit for me to respond to the third one because there is information that the public would appreciate. Lou, thank you for that very thoughtful email today. I won't address all three of them, as I, you know, I wrote back to you, and Mark and Paul Jaffoon will be studying the first two issues this week. And so will Donna. With respect to the third issue in downtown, Mark is going to write you a formal response, but I can give you some information that we now have available. The reason the downtown project was delayed and is now moving fast is because of a distribution problem. It took 17 months to buy what's called a switchgear because of the backlog of switchgears. That's the big transformer that takes all the power and then distributes it to all the different parts of the building. It's now in, it's now been installed, and now they're just waiting for Eversource. Is it Eversource, National Grid, to bring power as needed to the building? But it's nothing to do with zoning. I will say what does have something to do with zoning in the downtown. And since the evening that Jay Ash was here presenting to us, he pointed it out, and it's become so obvious. Our zoning requires a first-floor commercial retail. We don't have a market in the downtown for commercial retail because of parking. And so to have that zoning requirement is something I've asked Mark and Bill Roth to reconsider and to bring Town Meeting to that party because we are moving to tear down the theater in the next three months. If Town Meeting approves it, that's going to be another live project, just like the former hole in the ground. But if they're required to put a first-floor retail, just like so many retail spaces in the downtown area, some of them that are brand-new, they'll remain vacant. There's just no demand. There's a big demand for housing. There's not a big demand for the first floor being retailed. So I think that policy, the zoning policy, is badly flawed, according to Jay Ash, who is the renowned expert. And I think we need to revisit that. And I've asked Mark to do that and get back to you with his thoughts on what I just said. Great feedback.
Just a response. I appreciate that update. I appreciate the information. I would suggest that we take a look at some of the other communities that have had major developments in Mansfield, in Foxborough. And you'll notice that there is commercial development in those areas. And that commercial development sort of supports and provides places for the people in the upper floors to get their, whatever they need, and go out to dinner and do other things. So I think we should be a little bit cautious about how we deal with a large population in a central area, and whether we expect them, then, to get into their car to go someplace to get their groceries, get their whatever other products that they need, or go out to dinner, entertainment. So I would suggest a more holistic view of that than just a quick passing piece. I'm not, I'm not being critical. I'm just being more analytical, I guess. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow Select Board members and to the citizens, three comments. The first two are related to a survey. We have two surveys on the town's website. I'm encouraging everyone to complete the survey. The first one is from the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, SEOC. We would love to know whether you feel a sense of belonging in the community, so please help us with admission. That survey starts with, "There is a U in Stoughton." Is there a U? Y-O-U. Please complete that survey if you care to, hard copies or in the lobby of Town Hall. The second survey is regarding Stoughton's housing future. This is a group that's being led by Bill Roth. And what the idea is to get feedback, and we would have a Housing Production Plan, HPP. It will identify our community's housing needs and establish a vision for the next five years. Additionally, the HPP will include goals and strategies about what types of homes and housing programs would most benefit Stoughton residents. So once again, everyone knows the town's website is stoughton.org. You could find these surveys in the news and announcement section. You might have to scroll to the right to get to these surveys, but they are out there, hard copies are available at Town Hall. The third thing I would like to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to Town, Mr. Coulter, and that's regarding, as a preparation to our budgeting season. Last year, you gave us a binder, and it included pay raises, FTEs, hiring policy, organizational charts, four-year capital plan was included, revenue analysis, joint costs, the MOUs. And my ask, are you going to update this binder this year and provide us with another updated copy?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. Every planned year, we provide guidelines, and that's what that book is, for objectives and conditions, guardrails, for our upcoming budget. And then we present them to the board and ask you to consider them, comment, and make them your own. And then we go forth in the budget process, following those guidelines to a T. And unless there are circumstances beyond our control, economic changes or whatever, you can expect that your budget, which will be submitted to you in December, will include the guidelines that you signed off on. So, great question. Appreciate it. It'll be the third year in a row we do it that way, and it keeps us focused and on track. Thank you for asking.
And thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow Select Board members.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCrisky, do you have any comments today?
Well, I didn't until they started. And I just want to respond to my colleague on the other side of the table in the mentioning of masks. And I guess, you know, maybe he doesn't watch the news when we have police officers that have sworn to uphold public peace and law and order that are being assaulted the minute they put their uniforms on. When they're doing their job of apprehending people, we have our own residents that are assaulting them, searching them down, harassing them off-duty. And if a police officer is going to wear a mask to protect himself and his family from being harassed, threatened, and maybe worse, I'm sorry. I will leave that decision to the police chief and the men and women of the Stoughton Police Department and our town manager. I will not sign, and I will oppose, every action of a policy being drafted by this board, unless the majority sign it. I will not, and I will speak out in opposition to it every minute. I am appalled that in this climate, and what our own police officers here in the town of Stoughton go through, to ever say that I'm going to put them at harm, and if it means protecting their identity from thugs and people that want to hurt them, not knowing who they are, but those are somebody else's son, daughter, mother, father, I think it's appalling and an insult, and plain an insult to the men and women of the Stoughton Police Department. That's my comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no comments for tonight. I have got a couple, but I'm going to save those for our next meeting. I think we're moving along pretty nicely. So it's 8:04, and the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's an application for a common vehicle license, all alcohol, beverage license, and entertainment license for Mango Bongo and Pub located at 28 Porter Street. Welcome. I think, I think we saw you recently, and it is a delight to see you again, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. A comment before they begin?
Sure.
I just want to point out to the members that at the request of the chair, we are developing executive summaries for every one of the complex issues. And I just want to let you know that that's what's before you this evening. It provides an overview of each of the items, the agenda items, that may offer some degree of further information. So I just request that you read the summary as the presenters present their case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. As has been our custom for the last year or so, or two years, I'm going to pass the gavel over to our vice chair. She'll be in charge of operating this section of the meeting. All comments should be directed through her. She's the de facto chair for the purposes of this hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Kavie. Regarding the public hearing, first, I would like to state the process. I will read into record the hearing. I will accept a motion to open the public hearing. We will take a vote to open the public hearing. I will provide background based on a package of information I've received. The guests will then talk about why they're here, they're representative... The guests will then talk about why they're here, they're representative. Then the Select Board will ask questions to our guests. The citizens will ask questions to our guests. The Select Board may have additional questions about the business. Then the representative, maybe the owner or the attorney, will have a closing statement. I will accept our Select Board members. And then a motion will be made to grant or not accept the request, and we'll take a vote on it. So with that said, I'll first read into record the hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on August 5, 2025, at 8:00 p.m. to consider the application of Mango Bongo and Pub Incorporated, located at 28 Porter Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072, for a common vehicle license and all alcohol beverage license and an entertainment license. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass, and/or virtually and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to gperrera@stoughton-ma.gov, per the order of Stephen Cavie, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority. I will accept a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. A little background about why we're here first, or the documents in order. We have, as our guests, before I go on, I proceed with the background, I would like to introduce Louisa Fernandez and maybe your attorney, but please state your name and what your relationship is to the business. And then I'll go back to the package of documents.
Sure. Louisa Fernandez, one of the owners, and this is my business partner. It's Rosalie Oliveres Tivés.
And I'm Jennifer Allen, the attorney for Mango Bongo.
Thank you very much. So our process is to have the departments review and approve or make contingencies to their approval. So the first was the fire department, they approved. The water department approved. The board of health approved, but there is a comment. Next, the collector's office approved with recommended restrictions. They said the office has no objection to the application, the request that the fiscal year '25, '24 fiscal year '25 real estate taxes, along with fiscal year '25 water and sewer bills be brought up to date.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me? Through you to Deborah?
Yes.
Deborah, FYI, those all fees and taxes were paid in full today.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. The next is the building department. It approved with recommendations and restrictions. The occupant load of the building is 62 based on the building code. The indoor seating capacity is 56 and shall be heated. The outdoor seating capacity is 44. The use of the outdoor patio area and the two proposed 14-by-24 gazebo's will be prohibited until a building permit has been submitted and all work has been completed and inspected. The outdoor space must be enclosed with barriers as per guidelines. The next is the police department. They approved with recommendations. And the police indicated that we have no objection to the application or applicant other than the hours requested. The applicant is looking to have the business hours from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. We object to these hours and believe there should be no entertainment, food service, and/or alcohol service after 1:00 a.m. Furthermore, there should be no entertainment outside and/or with the establishment doors open past 10:00 p.m. on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. This will serve the neighbors. They also indicated there was some discrepancies on the name, so verification of the name was needed with the affidavit and the address. But since that time of the application, I see information was filed, and there is consistency in the name on record. And let me see. Okay. I just want to make sure that I have covered everything. All right. Now for the guests.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one comment, although it is in my speech, regarding the closing time. We did make an adjustment to that on the application, and we're only seeking for a closing time of 1:00 a.m., not 2:00 a.m. So I'd just like to make that clear. And then also for the name affidavit, we did fix the typos and the address, which I know that they were satisfied with, which I know the quarries were also required, so that's all said. Thank you very much for having us here. As you already know, we're here for the application for their C V license, all alcohol license, and entertainment license at 28 Porter. A public need has already been demonstrated. The House of Brews Restaurant was previously at this location with all of the aforementioned licenses. Since House of Brews closed their doors, the area only has a few places where patrons can enjoy dinner and a drink with some entertainment. They plan on freshening up the place with some new decor while keeping the similar floor plan and patio outback. They are keeping the same hours as on the prior license as well. The proposed hours are Monday through Sunday from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And as you've already mentioned, which we did confirm as well, the occupancy is 62, seating capacity 56, with the additional 44 seats out on the patio for seasonal use. They plan on serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner with a fun new tropical theme, hence the name Mango Bongo. They have a five-year lease for this establishment as well. Louisa, who you've already met, and Rosalie are 50/50 stockholders of the restaurant. Louisa is the proposed manager for the liquor license. She is a Mass resident and a U.S. citizen. She's already tip-certified and has the experience running Du Brazil for over a decade. She's also familiar with the rules of the A B C C and Stoughton Liquor Licensing Board, as she is also a manager of the liquor license at Du Brazil, which is also violation-free. The restaurant is permitted as a right within the core Stoughton Center district, including alcoholic beverage service. I know that they are looking forward to serving up some delicious food and drink for the families and friends to come relax, unwind, and listen to some fun music. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Now to our Select Board members. I'll start with Mr. Chairman, Steve Cavie.
Sure. Thank you very much, Men of Vice Chair. So two of my favorite things are mangoes and bongos, so great name. And I'm very much looking forward to swinging by there. Really curious to know, you've worked in Stoughton now for a decade, successful business, and I've been at Du Brazil many times, and wonderful service and great food. So, you know, there's nothing, I think you'll be very successful. And there's certainly nothing in the application that has me concerned at all. I would love to hear some things about just the concept of the restaurant, really just out of curiosity more than anything else. I know you mentioned tropical food. Do you have any specific things you have in mind, or are you just still working out the menu?
Well, we are still looking at the menu, but this time we want to do something a little bit different. Like, we're going to start with breakfast. We're going to have like the traditional American breakfast, but we're also going to have a little bit of the international food. So, and at night, when we do have the bar, we're going to have, you know, the scores, the meat, you know, what are we going to have at night?
Yeah.
The finger foods.
Yeah, sure. Well, I don't know for the questions. And as I said, I mentioned, I'm in complete support of this application. You've been, you know, a wonderful business to have in town, and I wish you nothing but good luck, and I'm sure you'll do very well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Comment? I'd like to put Louisa's concerns at bay. I can tell you that Mr. Cavie loves finger foods as well.
I've come to discover there's almost nothing I won't eat.
Yeah. We're going to work on the menu. It's going to be good.
Mr. Gito, did you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions. My comment is, I'm glad to see that space is going to be used again, and it seems like it's going to be used in a very friendly way. And I wish you luck, and I think the people that were there before you did a fine job, and I expect that that same thing will happen with your establishment. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm a little bit nervous now, but trust me, the food, I think it's going to be good.
Mr. McCrisky, do you have any questions or comments?
You know, I was going to start with a little joke, but I think if I said, "I have a problem, Louisa, with this application," she may cry. I want to point out something. And when people judge other people, when some people are against local government without knowing who does what to make local government happen, I have seen in this application, in this process, everything fall together, which should make anybody in Stoughton proud to say that you live in Stoughton. When I met Louisa, there was some confusion, right?
Yes, sir.
There was some confusion. There's really some things had popped up that when some people would just say, "Jeez, I don't know what to do to help you." This has started with this process, and I think it's important for people to know what kind of town we have. And it started with former Selectman, former Town Manager Stephen Astis, who owns the building of the brew house that sat dormant for a lot of years because of the market, of course, and COVID and other things. But he made it very advantageous for Louisa and her partner to get their foot in the door. He gave them a very good deal, you know, to bring another business that's going to foster a great community, you know, in and around the restaurant, you know, to town. So then, of course, there's all those little bumps and bruises you get. And I did mention this to the town manager earlier, is that everybody should be thrilled with the way that our town departments came together, to not just say, "Hey, listen, I don't know what to tell you. Talk to your attorney." You know, a lot of attorneys get rich by that. But this was a department that did what they're supposed to do and helped the citizens of this town in foster business development. They went in and said, "Do this. As long as you're doing this, it's not going to stall the process." And they worked with them right through everything. I know that I took a look. I know there are other people that reside under this roof that were there and offered that assistance, and that's what makes it happen. That's how, and Mr. Cavie is the only one that was here when he heard me make a comment back in 2019, is that if we're going to promote business and downtown growth, we have to work at it. We have to show what we're doing to foster that growth. And we're doing that. It's alive and well and everything. The people are coming through the door that want to be here to serve a purpose, who have seen a need, and they're going to fill the need in the community. We have every town department, right down, as you've seen, the police station and everybody, the fire department have all signed off on it. And the board of health, what they did was miraculous. You know, they gave above and beyond, but they do that with everybody. And once in a while, you just got to make these comments. You have to let people know because, you know, you get on social media, we sure as hell hear all the problems, but we don't let people enough hear all the good that's happening in the town. And if we don't do that, the people with the negative comments are just going to keep out there. We have to foster good growth, good relations, and that's going to bring great things to town. I think you're going to do fabulous. And I mean, I don't know how you do the hours you do. I don't know how you do that because the older I get, I'm in bed by nine o'clock now, if we don't get out of here at 11 o'clock. But so I can't wait to vote for it. Congratulations. You know, Mr. Town Manager, please pass on to your staff, my thanks, you know, for what we're doing to promote this kind of positive business relationship.
Thank you, Chair.
Great things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the owners. It's time to toot your own horn. You talked about the menu. Talk about what is the ambiance inside of your restaurant? What kind of music are you going to play? Like, toot your horn, and you're talking to people, you know, that are not only in the Great Hall, but that are online and who will watch this in days to come. Rosalie or Louisa, your choice.
Let's get to it. It's a jazz. It's good music. Jazz. We're going to have, of course, you know, karaoke. Yeah, it's going to be. Slowly. Music.
You might want to talk into the microphone so that people can hear this.
I'm so sorry. Yeah. Push your thing. Maybe I'm good at blues, jazz. It slowly moves, it slowly music. It's short song. Nothing out. Sorry.
Mellow. You just said mellow. Jules said mellow.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, if you don't mind, I actually went there while they were doing work to it, and they've put their blood, sweat, and tears into this, where when you come in and they open, when you look at the bar, she was painting with her artistic abilities the whole new decor that you're going to see at the bar with hair dryers and epoxy, and just an amazing job that her own artistic ability is just amazing. So they've been working very hard on it.
That sounds wonderful. Let's open it up to the citizens. Do the citizens have any comments? I see Mrs. Walsh's hand up. Mrs. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I'm absolutely thrilled. The previous incarnations were very handy. I used to eat there two or three times a week before I would come to Town Hall for whatever meeting I wanted to attend. And it had a nice atmosphere, and I happened to go in the morning, and they had, you're going to get the train people, once they discover you're there. I'd like to hear more about the entertainment license. How many people are going to be entertaining at once?
Just one minute, Mrs. Walsh. I didn't know if Mr. Starr had a question in regards to this license, but I could give you a microphone in just one second. Okay, good. So Attorney... So, Attorney Allen, would you like to?
How many people will be performing at one time?
So, I think, so regarding the entertainment license, I know that they're looking for instrumental, and I think just possibly one, if anything. And it'd be more, they'd be playing an instrument with it or singing. Then outdoors, they're only just playing, they're not having any live music outdoors.
I understood that part, but on the actual application, does it say one performer? Because it's a small place, and they they used to have someone perform in the corner. But I didn't know if the application, does it say one, does it say two, does it say three?
So, that's actually left blank on this application, so.
So, it's not on the application?
No. It's just checked off for vocal music and karaoke.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Well, shouldn't we know whether there's going to be one performer or five?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
With that, I would be willing, when I make my motion, unless somebody beats me to it, I would make the motion to include no more than three, which was, I believe, the previous license, which gives them the flexibility, and I think it was more comfortable with two. But in, I would look at, in the absence of that being completed, to put that, because it was where the last one was. So, when you're ready for a motion, or, you know, an amendment after a motion is made, I'd be ready to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr.?
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. McCrisky. Is that three at one time? Because karaoke might might have like.
Yes.
Fifteen people, so no more than three at one time.
Well, yeah, no more than three at a time, because, again, I mean, if karaoke and people are singing, those are patrons.
Yeah.
You know, but, so, I don't think, I've never seen karaoke. They have fifteen people stand up and?
They can get, in a good night, you can get ten, fifteen people.
Well, those are, those might be patrons. I mean, they're not gonna be entertainers. So, I'm saying the, you know, the entertainers, music performers. If everybody gets up and starts singing, that's great. I wouldn't be a part of that, you know?
Thank you for that information. I don't have a huge objection to entertainment, and as the previous speaker pointed out, sometimes with karaoke, there's more than one person from the audience. Some people like to perform with friends, and I can't imagine that they would shout the house down to the degree that the neighbors would complain. But I am looking forward to the place being open. What about the handicapped? There's no way I can get in the front door, but you did have, the building did have a ramp in the back.
Yes.
Going up to the deck and then inside, and you'll, that will be my entrance?
Yes, it's still, it's still there.
Okay, and I know that the bathroom, unless you've changed it, the ladies' room was accessible.
Yes, everything's accessible.
One thing I've noticed is sometimes I can get into a restaurant, and then I can't get into the bathroom.
Oh.
But this, I know this place pretty well. I wish you a lot of good luck. I hope the board has noticed the number of women that have come forward to start businesses around the square. As a woman, I admire their guts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Mr. Starr, can you give Mr. Starr a microphone?
Four minutes, three minutes.
Here we go. If you can give Mr. Starr. Oh, it's gotta be related.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Starr, it has to be related to the.
You can hear me okay. I'm concerned for you starting a new venture that a lot of people have a problem when they first start, and it's a vetting problem. There are so many different, similar entertainment places in in that area, within a half a mile, that there might be competition that may give you a similar problem that that they had before. In other words, I don't want you to slip on thin ice, okay? This is what I have to say, okay? You're taking a giant step, and you gotta go real slow at the point.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good advice. Are there any other questions or comments from our citizens? I'm looking in, oh, yes, Jonna, please, please hand Jonna a microphone.
Oh, I just was gonna say, good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you need a microphone to say it.
I just wanted to wish you luck and all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Anyone online, do you have any questions or comments? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
I would just like to give, give them a private endorsement. I toured it several times as we were working this process, and Luisa brought me downstairs in the basement, and we got locked in the cooler, and I could tell you their drafts are gonna be very, very cold.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. That was a good one. All righty. Select Board members, do you have any other comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
I make the motion to approve of the application as submitted, and in the absence of the entertainment, that include the number of no more than three to be placed. Yes, three, we'll say paid entertainers.
And closing at one o'clock?
Yes, closing at one o'clock, yes. As a matter of fact, Madam Chair and members of the board, a couple of years back, there was a motion made that passed that no applications would be accepted, you know, that went beyond one o'clock. And that was done through some other stuff that had happened years back, so that it still is out there, whether we have it in print is another thing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And part of my closing statement that I was going to have, although you stole my thunder, I just had wanted to thank all of the departments, because I know to get us here today, there was a lot of hard work and a lot of people joining together to get this all done, so.
And that's, that's very nice that you say that, because my words, you know, people will say, yeah, sure, what else are you gonna say? Right? But it's nice that you say that to validate that, because I know the talent we have inside our town at every level, but it's, it's extra special when you're coming here and and other municipalities that you may represent clients for, that you saw it here. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming I'll see you in six months when you open up your next business.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take.
Number three.
I'm gonna go slow this time.
But the next time she comes back, she'll have gray hair from having this one.
She's already not sleeping.
I wanna make sure this works first.
You're gonna be fine.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's gonna be fun.
I hope to see all you guys there.
We'll be there.
Yes, indeed.
You'll get sick of seeing us.
And with that said, I'll pass the gavel back to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Kevy. There you go.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. The next order of business is, it's listed here as to consider and approve elementary school design and construction bonds. We have, representing this, Paul and Newt. From our executive summary, it seems like, like the heading might be a little bit misleading, so I'll, we'll leave it to you to, to fill in the blanks, but it's very good to see you as always.
Thank you. So, nice to be here. It's nice to be seen. So, yes, the, the agenda item is misleading, because it should actually read that it is the approved, to consider and approve elementary school design and construction bonds, models one and two. There is no bonds tonight. We will not be signing off on bonds until maybe October or November, possibly September, depends on how quickly bond council can get through this. And I'm sorry for the confusion on this.
Not to worry.
Okay. So, before you, in the packet, there is two models. One is the twenty-year model at four percent, and the second model is a twenty-five-year model for 4.25% interest rate. The finance team is recommending the model number one. By doing this, we would save the town approximately $4.4 million in interest. I hope that you agree with it. If you don't, we certainly can discuss.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I do. Have some question. Yeah. Hello. Nice seeing you again. You too. My first question is regarding the model with the 4% Town of Massachusetts exempt debt service only.
Correct.
It doesn't have a page number, but it's the exhibit that has the blue coloring in column D and G. And my question is, I'm just trying to tie the numbers back, so what I did, I brought a copy of the warrant article, special town meeting warrant book that's dated February 3rd, 2025, and the dollar amount that we approved at town meeting, that was the $113,157,888. Ken, I know we're not voting on a bond now, but I just wanna make sure we can tie the numbers that were approved at town meeting to the exhibit. Can you help us do that, please?
Absolutely. So, you may be, there may be some confusion with column number C for $78,000, $78,928,258. That is actually the exemption of bonds for the high school, and a portion of that is for the fire station. Column D is only for the $25 million bond that we're going to be taking out in September, leading us to pay back $37,27,600. I know there was a little concern with the last page of the packet of both models, and how they arrived at the $65,227,000, $65,227,473, and how it became that figure at the bottom of the top section. So, when I did the calculation of the $113,157,888, the calculation is off a small amount, 42.36%, which is the MSB portion, MSBA portion, it should read $47,933,681. But the table reads $47,930, $930,405, which is a difference of $3276. That goes, that's true with the towns portion, which is 57.64%, the table should read $65,224,207, but the table reads $65,227,483, which is the exact opposite of the top portion. So, I don't know where Hilltop, their decimal point was, how they came up with the difference of $3200, but when I do the calculation, it does come out to the total of $113,157,888 completed.
Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Okay, you're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions, or anything they'd like to address right now? So, for me, there's one, one thing I have in mind. I know this is, this would only be for the first 25 million, oh, that we're borrowing. The, the difference between the two, if we look at the, you know, sort of the residential tax rate impact, it seems to be 26 cents per thousand versus about 23 cents per thousand, so about three cents per thousand difference, which, which doesn't seem like a lot when it's mentioned in those terms. But just to help, help us make this decision in the future, it would be helpful to see what that looked like as an impact on like, on a tax bill. What is, you know, what would somebody see actually when they have to pay their bill? So, because as this was being presented to people, leading up to the election, a lot of the estimates were for 30-year bonds, and so there might be an expectation that, that we go with 30-year bonds, even though that, that was never really articulated. I think a lot of the, the information about the cost per person was related to 30-year bonds. Now, this is only the first, it said the first 25 millions, it's, it's a small, just a small section of the total amount, but if we're going to be using all 20, 20-year bonds, that's going to change the math generally, and people might feel like, like there was a bait and switch, or like, or that they were presented with information that, that we just, we always knew that we were gonna do something different. So, I'd just like to have that sort of presented and be very transparent about what the, what, like, you know, family of four, what they're gonna see at the end of the year on their bill.
Absolutely. And I certainly will bring that to the finance team's attention.
Yeah.
These are the two items that were presented to the financial team from Hilltop. I can certainly go back and find out what a 30-year would come out at. We certainly don't have to answer any of this. You don't have to vote on it, doesn't, you know, it's just mainly to say, which one would you rather choose? But we can certainly look at a 30-year if you'd like, and I can present that back, or Biz can present that back to the board.
Yeah, I guess, just my, I'll just really kind of reiterate more than anything else, is that this was something that, that our, our voters had to decide on doing.
Right.
And once they voted yes, they very much fall out of the equation. Now, the, you know, people aren't telling them what's going on, they're not asking for their opinions about it, and there's no, there's no sort of infrastructure for really providing that kind of information. And these are decisions that, that Hilltop, as experts, are presenting to the board, and will be deciding this. And, you know, our concerns might be looking at the big picture, right? If we say $4 million, that sounds like a great thing, but if it comes at a higher yearly payment for a taxpayer, then it might not be a good thing. So, we, we might have to just, you know, eat it for a little while, so that, so that we can, we can help make sure that we don't, you know, essentially just sort of disregard the, the impact it has on the taxpayers. So, I think, I don't wanna, even though they are technically sort of out of the equation, their, their interests are no longer being actively sort of marketed to. I still wanna make sure that, at least, that we keep our eye on that.
Absolutely.
And then we make sure that, that, that we keep promises we made, we, we are able to, we at least look at that data and say, you know, if, I'm just making these numbers up, because, but the difference between 25 and 20-year bond and 25, as I mentioned, the difference is about three cents per thousand. And, you know, on a 50,000 house, 50,000, maybe like 100, 200 bucks or something like that, it might, it might not be very much. It might have no impact, and we might say, yeah, it's, it's so miniscule, it's $25 difference a year out of an $8,000 tax, tax bill. But, but if we, we see that it's not, if it's, if we see that, oh, some, someone who has an advertised house is gonna take a little bit more of a hit than we realized, then, then if we space it out, we do pay more, but we're able to, to not impact people so directly, so much in one, in one given year. So, that's one thing I just wanna keep, keep our eyes on, and I don't fault anybody for this. This is, this was a helpful analysis, and they're giving us what they.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize.
Ed? Yeah, we're gonna have to stop the conversations in the back.
Mr. Starr, could you please, you, your voice is very distracting. I'm trying to listen to the chairman talk in your.
Yes, it's very disturbing. I'm sorry.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Not at all, not at all. So, to the extent that we have to, I think it's important that we do it. I don't, I don't fault anybody, as I mentioned. I think they're trying to give us information that is their recommendations, that what they think is best, give us some options. I just wanna expand it a little bit more to make sure that we're capturing everything.
Absolutely, and I will go back to Hilltop and ask them for a 30-year and get that to the board. You guys are meeting on the 19th, I believe?
Yes, sir.
There's actually no hurry, because the second part of this insert in your agenda provided the May 5th. provided the May 5th project scope and budget agreement. So there are two factors that are going to determine the impact on taxpayers. The first one is the amortization schedule, 20 years or 25. And the second one is the cost of the project. Since the agreement we've made on Fano Road, which has not yet been approved by the MSBA, this May 5th letter has become obsolete. So many things have changed. The numbers should go down significantly unless inflation causes them to go otherwise. Fano Road should save us millions of dollars. There will be another letter from MSBA once they approve the new project scope and, and the, and the new budget agreement. And then Paula would have the exact numbers to run both scenarios. On your second point, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more. The independent working group prided itself on providing data to citizens on which they could vote. I believe, if I recall, it was based upon a 25-year amortization schedule. If the opportunity to save $4 million over the course of the remaining five years is to be considered, I know that the working group will want to have an information session to present to the public both options. Because they, based upon their concern for their own integrity, to your point, don't want to be accused of misleading people. And I, I think that information session will build consensus when they see what the savings is, what the impact on taxpayers is going to be as to what the guidance is giving to the board so you can make an informed decision.
With the, the working group working, you know, essentially to, to provide recommendations to you and, and our hall, your recommendations, Paula's recommendations, if they're still active, the members of that, of that committee, I'd love to hear their thoughts.
Excuse me, Steve, I'm sorry. Been for a meeting to receive the information from Paula and to communicate to the public. They would view that as their fiduciary obligation, having spent a lot of time trying to spread that circle. And I know you agree.
Yeah, so, yeah, if, if you're able to run this through, have that, if they have a recommendation, that'd be.
For Mr., the town manager, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes, sir.
When do you expect? MSBA and all of this together? I'm thinking of this, the timing of this in relation to perhaps having a thought to try to have this wrapped up prior to that. If you can, we should know about that.
The chairman. Scope and the MSBA. A verbal port for the Fano Drive aspect in the, in the, however, to a town meeting vote that we will exchange properties, sale of property that make Fano possible before they give us a five. Can give us a letter subject to that vote. So we'll put conference call on it this morning. Welcome.
Excellent. Are there any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Have to vote on this tonight. It sounds like it'd be wise for us to just have a conversation together. Our next meeting just answered your question, 19th. But, you know, between you and Mr. Coulter, we'll, we'll follow your, when we next show up on the agenda.
Absolutely. Have a nice night, guys.
Miss Newt, see you. Thanks so much for sticking around.
Thank you, absolutely. It's nice to be here, like I said.
Okay, for our next item, Tosca Drive roadway. Here listed James O'Keefe. Again.
Do as well.
Would you remind me of your name? I.
Sure. For the name, for the. Langley with High Point.
I, oh, we saw it.
Not James.
Just a point of information.
Yes, sir.
If the. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. So as I mentioned, good to see you again. And we have already had a presentation. Cause of it, we, the, the project or at least the company. As I recall, we left that meeting saying, anybody have any questions to reach independently and have those questions answered? We've had plenty of time to do that, at least for myself. I feel satisfied. Conversation we had before, the presentation more and the recommendation of engineering. But I want to give you a moment if you just want to, we'll just reiterate what you're, what you're.
Sure, I'd be happy. I'm just going over of the project. My previous, the last. Z Holdings 4DLC. Along Tosca Drive in May. They had. Tax properties that began with what the buildings we were calling Buildings Three, Four, and Five. While they were doing the site improvements, they received a letter from the town saying that they were in violation of the permitting regulations for the town. So all work ceased. They reached out to High Point Engineering, my department, my company, and asked us to assist them with preparing the approved site plans. We proposed improvements. Compare, sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, we're going over everything that was brought up at the last meeting.
I just asked for an overview, though. So I just.
Okay, I mean, it's, I mean, we had that and I would have spoke up earlier until I just heard that we're going down the same road. I mean, is it really required? Because we got a lengthy presentation on what this was and.
If you feel satisfied, then, then we can.
Well, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it's, we're here as four members. I'd be ready to, to vote approval right now because I feel that we did this due diligence and, and beyond that, actually, at the last meeting where the presentation was made, the plans were there to back it up. I, I made the statement then that this is the type of business that we want coming into town who has taken the proactive move, move to better the area and to make it easier. And it's, it's a compliment to the area. So, and again, the, the Office of Development Services has signed off on it, you know, and Craig has an email out to us stating that. So I'm just saying, instead of having the, the applicant come before it and do the overview that we beat to death at the last meeting, you know, I'd be ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if you mind hopping off the hot seat, I think if we have a motion, we can have a little debate. And if there's any questions that need to be asked, you can help us out with those.
I'd be happy to answer, yeah.
I think the chairman was just hoping that she would have a good experience.
Well, it doesn't get better than this, right? We've already gone through it. Why go through it again? Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the presentation that was made at the last meeting and was being updated would be approved as supported by the Office of Engineering, Development Services of the Town of Stoughton.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much, guys. I really appreciate your patience.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, James had a lot to say tonight.
Okay, so our next order of business on the open meeting is consent agenda. There's four items, approval of open session minutes, meeting of July 2nd, 2025. Item B, application for a block party permit on Lowell Ave, including the extension, extension side, on August 16th, 2025. Item C, integrated collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Stoughton and the Stoughton Superior's, Superior Officers for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. And D, determination of useful life fire ladder truck. Does anybody have any questions about any of these?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item 8B, application for block party permit on Lowell Avenue.
Okay. Okay, hearing no others, is there a, a motion to, to approve the consent agenda items A, C, and D?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we'll only look at item B. Madam Vice Chair, having pulled it, I'll give you the floor to describe any questions or concerns you have related to it.
The reason for holding item 8B, the application for the block party permit on Lowell Avenue, I just wanted to make sure I completely understood the points that the police department recommended to actually block. So there was a change and we have the diagram. Where, where are those new blocks going to be placed? I just want to make sure that, that that is included in the permit if we care to move forward with that. And that the, the organizer understands that to be on the permit.
Okay, so you have the, the note from the police say, police recommended modifying the map of street closures, request it with application. Modified map is attached and was emailed to applicant on July 21st for, for hearing. I don't think that map is in our documents, though.
Is it the last page?
Last page. There it is, okay. Yeah, modified per police. So it looks like they're looking to close off a portion of the roundabout that's there.
So Mr. Chairman, through you to Deborah, if approved by this board, and if you so choose to amend their application to include the recommendation of the police, then that's what will be issued as part of the permit.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
With the recommendation from.
As, as modified, yes.
Second.
Okay, so the motion to approve as modified by the, by the police, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda is done. So the last item on our agenda for tonight is an executive session. This is approval of executive session, sorry, there's two items. Approval of executive session minutes, meeting of June 3rd, 2025, and June 17th, 2025. And item B, executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy, a strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. Police chief.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I believe the organizer of the block party had a quick question.
If you don't mind, just hop it up so we can hear you on the mic. There's a, press the button in the, just once and it will turn green and then we'll be able to hear you.
Okay. Good evening. John Licrish, 183 Lowell Ave Extension. So I guess my, so thank you for the approval. I guess the only question is, we put a rain date on the application. Is that fine as well? I didn't hear that mentioned.
So did the application itself list a rain date?
Yes.
Then, yeah, we, we approved, approved the application as is written, with the only modification being the police modified map.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I didn't realize you were here, but I will say thank you for, for organizing this. When I was a kid, these, these, we had these all the time. I haven't seen one in a long time. And so I think this is going to be a lot of fun.
I think so, too. All right, thank you.
You will. Yes, so motion to, let's see, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. What was that? Yeah, for, yeah, for, I already read the agenda items.
So may.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gito. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
I've voted yes as well. We will be adjourning from executive session and not returning to ocean, open session. So the open session will, will, will close now. The time is 9:02. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.